Feels like we haven't been here in a long time. Shelley, will you please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton? Hannahford?
All right, we have a corner. We'll go ahead and get started. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote in the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19, 2021. Approval of February claims in the amount of $131,837.94 and payroll expenses of $193,869.71. And approval of March claims in the amount of $170,105.84 and payroll expenses of $208,091.46. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six is reports from staff. First item is the Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on January 26 and February 23, 2021. Dr. Hannahford isn't here this evening. Did he leave a report for you, Angelica?
He did. So it sounds like the staff is staying very busy. COVID cases are going down. The staff at the hospital and the homeless at home have received their vaccines. Had several appointments and reappointments to medical staff. They've worked to update some policies. And so they're also talking about that surgeries will begin again at the hospital now that COVID numbers have been down significantly. Sher has also taken over the Winoka Clinic and will be operating three to four days a week. And then the stimulus money that they've received at the hospital has helped with several capital projects.
Does council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is personnel committee meeting on January 28, 2021. Mary or Daniel?
I wasn't. No. We talked about staffing needs for, temporary staffing for the fire department because we had two firemen out long term. We approved one temporary staff member, but we didn't end up meeting that person. I think everybody is either in the process of returning back to work or has returned back to work.
Any questions regarding the personnel committee meeting? Item C is the Alba Arena Authority Meeting on February 2, 2021. Angelica?
I don't have a lot. The agenda is in your packet. I apologize if I pull that up. I did not attend the meeting, so this is just the agenda that we received from the committee. If you want to skip that one, I apologize if you get the bottom.
It looks like they didn't have any action items other than executive session and approval of their minutes and finances and stuff. But I understand that things are moving forward and hopefully we'll visually see action before long. Next item is sanitation committee meeting on February 4 and 9, 2021. Brandon?
We discussed several things. One was looking at the roll-off charges and rewarding the application for the roll-offs. And then we talked about reworking the application for the trash exemptions and everything to make it more agreeable to what is actually going on right now. Discussed the need for more poly carts and two-yard containers and everything for trying to long-term plan on that. Talked about the condition of the trash trucks and how we're doing on that. Discussed about air curtains, whether it ought to buy or try to build one. I think we have some parts and stuff and just get it put together, which would help alleviate the problem of branches and maybe some grass puppings too. Discuss that some issues with the grass puppings out there that they have laid there so long that they start to heat up, actually start to smell and stuff. So we have a problem with trying to actually get that put out and stuff. So we're looking at how to handle the clipping store. They don't pile up and then heat up like that and cause a fire issue. That's, that'd be it.
Are there any questions from the council regarding the sanitation committee meeting? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on January 20 and February 24, 2021. Connor, do you have a report to share with us?
I was unable to make the January meeting. I'll just report on the February. There were four items, the first one being the Alba Chamber of Commerce requesting funds for their tourism and promotion marketing project. The request was for $21,200 on a yearly basis. Tourism decided to approve 12.6 of that on a six-month basis. Trial period may not be the best word for it, but they wanted to see how it went, come back in six months to show what we've done and then request the rest of the money. The next one would be the governor's invitational turkey hunt. Neil Williams presented for that. That was approved unanimously for $2,500. The last two were from the same organization, the Oklahoma Junior Rodeo Association. They have two events here, one in July, one in August. Both of those requests were $6,000 each. Those were both approved unanimously. And that would be it. Do you want to answer any questions?
Does council have any questions? All right, next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commission Meeting on January 11 and March 8, 2021. I'll also report on the...
I'm reporting on the January 1 and the January meeting.
Okay, I was going to report on the March meeting. And so we met last week. We did have a few items for action. The first one is going to be on our agenda here in a little bit with regard to a change order that reduces the amount of our ODL's omnidirectional approach lighting system project. We also talked about forming a budget committee and we're going to work on that. We did approve reinvestment of CD number 11, 9/11, which expired on March 1. And we also had an executive session to discuss the evaluation of the airport manager, which we gave recommendations to the city manager on performance objectives for that position. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. All right. Item G is the Alba Recreation Complex Board Meeting on February 10, 2021. Brandon?
I'm meant to review bids. And then we discussed the insurance. Well, our bids came in a lot higher than what the insurance had planned on paying, and so the insurance is going to send out an engineer at the week of March 22nd, just kind of relook at everything and see if what we're actually bidding out is what needs to be done. And then we may go out and bid that process over again, depending on what insurance is. That's pretty much all of it.
And that's on the roof?
That's on the roof, yes, the roof.
Well, the roof and the...
Roof, the side vents, removing the side vents.
Are there any questions for Brandon? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Public Library Board Meeting on March 8, 2021. Mr. Eckhart?
I was unable to attend due to a conflict with parent-teacher conferences, but I did review, so I'll just kind of go over the highlights here. Currently, the library elevator is not working. They are working to try to get the light fixed, but the, some of the equipment in the elevator to repair it is old because the, some of the parts are no longer made. So they are having to be sent off to the manufacturer and hope that they can be rebuilt. Hopefully that's not a bigger problem than it seems. The library has contracted out to a new magazine vendor, one year, 24 magazines. Trying these digital magazines has worked out somewhat, but they still haven't had the success with those that they thought they might. State aid was approved. Library received almost $9,000 within the next week. Purchasing some library needs for those replacing computers, computer screens, and equipment that's end of life, I guess you could say. The big thing is that they do plan on opening the main floor of the library for the first time in, well, about a year, I guess, the week of March 29th. This will be a grab-and-go kind of thing. Everything's going to be on the main floor. So they still require social distancing, masks, hand sanitizing if you're using the computer, limited time. Nobody can sit down and be in there. Children must be accompanied by adults if they're under sixth grade. All even youth materials will be displayed on the main floor. It's pretty much going to be go-in, get what you want, check out, come back. All materials will still be quarantined for a period of time after the return. They will still offer their curbside or desk pickup, so if you still want to just call in and reserve something, then that's available too. And then they've got same guidelines here pretty much that they went through.
Does council have any questions from the library report? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Municipal Cemetery Meeting on March 10, 2021. Mr. Reed, do you have a report for us?
Yes. First off, we are going to have a special meeting. Date's not been set to work on the budget, so you can look for that item. There have been no complaints for the last three months. The section is, he's doing some weeding and he's been setting stones and repairing. I believe you were informed last time that for about two to three inches around the stones themselves, starting on the, I think it's Block C on the eastern end of the cemetery, they're going to spray some stuff that's kind of, I don't know if it's going to be Roundup or something like that, which will cut out the weed eating that they have to do, and it's wide enough that all they have to do is then mow it. They're going to test it in that area. If you want to see what it looks like, the Hartner Cemetery has already begun that process. They will not go in and spray the entire plot area. It's just going to be around the stones. We did change our meeting times, Mr. Mayor, from 8:00 in the morning to 6:30 in the evening. A question has been raised, should we move the day since it's still on Wednesday and that might interfere with people showing up for church, but that's only been in the discussion stage. The third week of April will be a cleanup of the cemetery. Chris will have assistance to go through and pick up any of the flowers and things that are laying on the ground, not on the stones. Also, Mr. Parsons, Joe, attended the meeting and his beautified Alba group. I don't know if it was a clear outright volunteer, but suggested they had an interest in going up and helping clean and straighten up the cemetery as part of that group. And of course, once again, that's the third weekend in April. Chris will be trying to reset some curbing that was moved, but it's an interlocking system. It's for the Fayette-Eckard Services. And I know this is a lot of history. You probably don't care, but it's the old Gass Boy family plot with only had the mother buried in it and the father married a renfue, or the husband, so he's in the renfue. And about 20 years ago, somebody discovered that there was a relative still living in Garland, Texas, and they went and got the signature. And yes, they had a lot of fun getting things straightened out because Mr. Marshall and Mr. Wharton, everybody had been after the Gass Boys plot there in Section 1. Anyway, it made for an interesting story, and I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Does council have any questions? Thanks, Lain. Next item is the swimming pool task force meeting on March 11, 2021. Brandon?
Pool Task Force met. The biggest thing that we did was to comprise a letter to send into city council for recommendation on where we're at with engineering report, just kind of an update. So I'll just read that letter to council and then answer any questions you have. Dear members and citizens, the Alba Municipal Task Force has obtained the attached copy, attached engineering report, which details the current condition of the Alba Municipal Swimming Pool. The report was commissioned in an effort to determine the condition of the swimming pool so decisions could be made with regard to repairing the swimming pool or replacing the swimming pool. The facilities connected to the operation of the pool were evaluated. These included the bathhouse, gazebo, pool plumbing, filtration systems, and children's wading pool and the pool itself. Based on the engineering report, it is the task force position that the swimming pool shell, the system supporting it, must be replaced in order to create a facility that is reliable to operate, easy to maintain, and safe for the public. It is also the task force position that the pool bathhouse should be maintained as a part of the new facility. It will be remodeled as a part of the construction project to meet the required ADA regulations. It is our desire that the gazebo be a part of the new facility as well. The children's wading pool must be removed, however, due to current regulations. The task force recommends that the City of Alba pursue campaign of private donations following the campaign with a matching grant application. Whatever funds are raised with these vehicles will become the budget for the new facility. At the time of understanding what that amount is, the new facility can be designed to reflect the budget available. The strategy is similar to the one that was used in Hennessy, Oklahoma, for the construction of their new pool facility. It appears to have yielded a facility that the community is pleased with, and the City of Hennessy was able to afford within their time-limited expanded tax structure. The engineering report provides an estimated cost to replace the swimming pool facility and remodel the pool bathhouse. These estimates exceed $3 million. The engineering task force is planning additional meetings with community to present the engineering report and the task force recommendations. Additional feedback will be collected from the community. At the completion of this task, the task force recommendation that the task force be dissolved and replaced with a new committee or board similar in function to the Alba Rec Board in order to execute the fundraising campaign and grant applications, and then further oversee construction of the project and oversight of operations in new swimming pool facilities. Sincerely, Alba Swimming Pool Task Force. So there's one part in there I want to make a note of. The estimate for $3 million was to repair and remodel the bathhouse. So that is to repair the current basin and remodel the bathhouse. The job is so large, there's a certain money requirement that you have to meet, or you have to stay under to not have to meet ADA compliance and be grandfathered in, and we will not meet that by a mile.
Refresh my memory, we did have two different engineering firms?
We had one engineering firm, well, we had two companies combined to do the engineering, and then we have sent it out to a third party that was recommended by a citizen, and we have never heard back from that engineering firm. So we're still waiting on that other report, but we can't sit and not start doing something.
And what's the new pool going to cost?
The idea is that, so what Hennessy did was they went to their citizens and said, how much are you willing to pay tax-wise and how much can we raise in private funding and grants? They took that total and then bid that out as their total. They basically went to every pool company and said, we have, I think it was $2.6 or $2.8 million, what can you build us? And that's what our recommendation is, is that we find out where our funding sits and how much the citizens of Alba are willing to put into that funding, and then from there we go and decide what we can build with that money.
The engineering firm that evaluated this go-around was not the same as the first go-around, correct? So we've already had one and then these two that combined? Or is this the same?
I don't think we had an engine.
Oh, we never had an engine. We had an estimate, okay.
Right, we had an estimate from different contractors, but I don't think we've ever had a true engineering report, no.
Now, I think one of the companies involved did give us, well, based off of looking at some...
Right, but it wasn't a full report, right.
Okay.
Is there one grant that we talked about originally that was like matching? Is it still a possibility that...
It is, yes.
We can reapply for that.
Yeah.
And that can be applied for a variable amount?
Yes.
Are there any questions regarding the pool task force meeting?
Did they have any idea how they were going to ask the citizens, how they were going to get that out there, that message out to...
We are going to hold multiple town halls over the coming weeks, not only to present the engineering report, we're going to do those at the pool, just like we did the other walkthroughs and things, so that everybody can, you know, not only look at a report, but see what we're talking about. And at that point, our goal is to give out surveys that will give us feedback on what people are, you know, okay with and, you know, willing to try or look into.
So what did Hennessy, you said, was able to handle it within their...
They did a sales tax, but they did a 10-year sunset on their sales tax. So that's why there was a time-limited tax structure. But they did raise a sales tax to do it. And then Hennessy's kind of a special case because they had the high school pitch in and bought their old pool location and used it for something else, and then, yeah, they had like a weird trade in there or something like that, so it's...
So do you not have any idea what that put them at for sales tax rate?
I do not. I do not. All I have is the...
I thought it was one sound.
Well, I mean, as far as total, where they were at before.
We can look that up. I can look that up.
Any other questions regarding the pool task force meeting? Thank you, Brandon. Next item is the Economic Development Committee Meeting on February 9th and February 24, 2021.
I didn't, I found it in there weird.
Oh, sorry.
We can do that first.
I mean, let's do that first. Pay's ready to go.
That's fine.
We'll come back to the financing.
So the Economic Development Committee has been meeting with Kate, represents the Bird Scooter Company, and I'll let her elaborate on this a little more. They are wanting and are going to be bringing Bird Scooter to Alba. It's part of their newer initiative to get into smaller communities. They're going to be bringing 50 of the scooters, and if you're not familiar with it, you've seen them. If you go to larger cities up on the city, Tulsa, that type of thing, I'll let her talk more in detail about it, but that's kind of the gist of it. If you guys have anything to add to that before...
And it does hire a person or more to take care of those scooters. It's not just, you know, we put them out there. There's a lot of stipulations about that.
So, and basically the conversation has just been, Bird wanted to introduce our council to the new business coming to town that does not require any council action, but I'll let Kate explain a little bit more about what...
Get her unmuted for a second. No, Kate, we can't hear you.
The sound turned up on the...
I've used this probably five or six times in the last week and I have any issues.
We're potentially going to be involved after you start reselling the official...
Maybe. Kate, I'm going to try to call you. I'm going to end the call and try to join back. Can you join the meeting again? I apologize. Thank you. I'd love to. I never have any problems with this except for when we're in city council.
It works great until you need it.
I know. All right, try it. No, we can't hear you.
She muted on her end?
Yes, I was going to say, but truly she's not. Are you muted on your end? No, she says she's not.
Well, it sounds like a really good opportunity for our community. We, the scooters will operate the same way bicycles do. They'll have GPS tracking on them that'll determine where they can and can't go within our community, all that kind of stuff. And we really feel like this is a good opportunity to hopefully connect some of the students from the university with the retail opportunities throughout the town, maybe more than they've been in the past. Also, you know, when parking's tight in some areas and you want to go to something and want to, you know, a less physically taxing mode of transportation than walking, you can hop on one of these scooters and pretty much go throughout town. And so it does seem like it's going to be a good opportunity for our community. Like I said, council action is not required. Do we have her on speaker?
Yes, I'm sorry. Kate, can you...
Hi, Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize. I'm not sure what's wrong.
No problem. Happy to be speaking with all of you. I turned off the microphone just so that there wasn't double audio. But thank you for giving a quick introduction. I think you're doing a good job explaining it. Bird, you know, would love to come to Alba. We'd love to start with the small fleet of 50 birds and then only increase as we see the need. So we're happy to stay at 50. That's all, you know, that's required from the demand. And if we, you know, need to, we can. We're currently live in Weatherford, Oklahoma, seeing really strong results there as well as Bartleville, Atlanta, and her, a number of different other Oklahoma communities as well that we're really excited for. So happy to answer any questions that you have today. But our ultimate strategy would be to partner together. No funding is required from your city's budget. We would simply be looking to partner and get feedback from you, and at the end of the day, you hold the key to the city. So we want to make sure that everything runs smoothly from the start and throughout the partnership that we put out, any, you know, potential concerns that come up along the way, to make sure that things run smoothly for the long term as well.
Does council have any questions?
I've heard in other communities, and I don't know if it's the, let me take this off security. I don't know if it was Bird in those communities or not, but with issues of the scooters being left laying in parking spaces, streets, on the middle of sidewalks, and so forth, so what is the, how does that get prevented or...
Absolutely. Yeah, I have a few analogies to kind of bring to the table. The first one being... The first one being, um, think back to the day where there was like horse drawn carriages and then automobiles were introduced way back in the day in the wild west. Things were extremely chaotic in the beginning and then we figured out a way to integrate automobiles properly into society. You think of the same thing happening with scooters where this was a new form of transportation and this has only been around for four years. Bird is the first company that introduced the dockless micro mobility solution. In the beginning, there were a little hiccups, uh, but since then, we have tremendously improved, uh, the way that we enter into cities and the way that we support cities. Um, so we put a ton of focus, how do we improve our technology to support the city's needs, uh, the operations needs and kind of the riders' needs as well. I like to think, and, and it often helps to, um, picture this where you get a puppy or a dog and, um, as you were training that dog, you're expecting, okay, I need to train this dog how to sit properly. You're able to do that and then all of a sudden maybe, you know, they start chewing shoes and you didn't expect. The scooter business is almost a little bit similar in a few ways to that, uh, because you're gonna, we need to be prepared to properly train and educate the, um, city that we enter into and kind of have proper expectations of what to do in order to make this a seamless introduction into your community. But we also know that there's times where we're gonna have to quickly pivot and address any concerns or flare ups that come up very quickly. Just like if a dog started chewing on your shoe, you quickly figure out how do you, um, you know, put that out so that, that isn't a concern as quickly as possible. The bird will be, uh, prepared to do that. Our operating model that we've rolled out in 2020 is called Fleet Manager. We're gonna have someone local within your community who's assigned a fleet of birds. They're going to be responsible for watching over that entire fleet. Um, they get a percentage of revenue that comes in from the vehicles. So the more rides that those vehicles get, the better that they do. In the beginning of the partnership, uh, portion of that revenue is going to go towards paying off the cost of the vehicle. So they're also incentivized, um, to make sure that those vehicles are not less abandoned or broken anywhere. They really care for every vehicle that they have assigned. Um, we have different tricks that come up. Um, so we can do things like help you to, um, implement kind of parking zones or incentivize riders with like a 25 cent coupon on a ride if they park in certain ways, um, which we can add as needed, um, and to help make sure that it, it's staying orderly. But ultimately you will have an account manager with Bird, um, that will be there to communicate with you and set expectations. So if there's an issue that comes up with parking, um, or clutter, just let us know and we'll quickly pivot and kind of put out any of those concerns, uh, with some kind of tricks and stuff up our sleeve. Uh, but ultimately we are going to come in and try to eliminate that from happening off the bat. Um, we have a few things like eight, uh, all users will go through educational training and they'll also be taking a picture of where their scooter is parked, um, with suggestions on how to park to eliminate that right off the bat.
Will Bird zone areas that are, like I, I remember riding it, uh, like in, when you're riding Tulsa, there's like certain areas that you can't take the scooter. Would that be, like it just shuts off if you get within a certain GPS coordinate or something like that? Will that also happen in Alba so that we don't have people, you know, riding through the Cherokee Strip Museum area or?
Absolutely. We have, uh, we have the most advanced kind of technology of any provider. Um, we admire in some of the strictest regulated cities, so the account manager will be able to implement, uh, things like that. Uh, they'll go through that with you as part of the implementation, but, um, we will put any no ride zones, we can do those permanent, um, like the locations that you said, or if you're having a Fourth of July parade or a farmer's market, we can do a little temporary no ride zone as well.
What's, what's to stop someone, playing devil's advocate here? You got some kid thinks it's gonna be funny, throws them in the bed of his truck, drives, drives around town, throws it off in a canyon somewhere. What's, is what's, how, do they, how, do they have, or you said they're like GPS coordinated so you could find them if they're missing or something like that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's a big thing for Bird. We do not want to lose vehicles. Uh, each vehicle is about $600, uh, from a cost standpoint. That local fleet manager is actually gonna be paying for, um, the majority of those costs out of the revenue that they're earning in the beginning of the partnership. Um, they are going to get silent alarm to their phone if a vehicle is moving without being in a ride, cause that means that somebody, um, isn't paying for a ride but that a vehicle is moving. So maybe if someone's dragging it out of its proper parked zone or has put it in their truck or is doing something funny to that vehicle, that fleet manager is gonna respond right away, um, to eliminate any theft or vandalism to the vehicle. Um, and they're going to be trapped as they get moved. Um, an example is in, in Yuma, Arizona, we just had, uh, a launch and the fleet manager got an alert and was able to quickly respond to someone who had put a scooter in a shopping cart and was trying to bring that home with them. Um, but they were able to quickly stop that from happening, uh, because of the alert that went there from.
And is it one fleet manager for the 50 that are deployed or is there multiple?
Yes, we, um, have typically one fleet manager for up to 100 birds. Um, anything more than that, we would add an additional fleet manager to the market. Um, that fleet manager, we go through and give them, we go through a full vetting process to identify a correct fleet manager. We then put them, uh, they sign a contract as a contract worker with us, um, and we put them through a pretty in-depth training program. Um, and then on an ongoing basis, the account manager, uh, would kind of communicate the needs of the city, um, and any updates that are required for that market. Um, they're supposed to live up to a certain standard of performance metrics that we watch. So we make sure that they're performing at our, um, understanding and if they fail too, then we can always swap them out for another, um, contract worker and a fleet manager. Um, and so that's kind of how the, the partnership works. If there's an individual scooter somewhere that you need to notify, we have an in-app , um, feature that's called Community Mode, so you can scan a scooter and report that scooter and that fleet manager would again get that silent alarm to their phone and they'd go respond to either move that vehicle or correct whatever, um, issue was reported through the Community Mode.
How's it handled for like access to the highways?
And do you think, how do we prevent accidents on highways?
Like going on highways, I mean, there, is there access to them or can they go?
Well, that's one of the things I talked with Kate earlier, it was brought to our attention that that was not allowed. Uh, state law does not allow for scooters on highways and so we would make the highway dead zones essentially where the scooters couldn't be.
Except they'd cross.
Crosswalks.
They, they'd be able to walk it across, carry it across, but they wouldn't be able to ride it across.
And I think you can unzone the crosswalk. I could be wrong, yeah.
So it forces them to the, I think there's three crosswalks across from the college and then, well, four.
So we also put local notifications in the app, so if anybody is renting one of the scooters within Alba's operating zone, we can make a notification that comes up that reminds every rider, please do not ride on, like you are not, um, you know, able to ride on the 64 to 81. Uh, please walk the scooter across those highways, um, as needed. Or again, we can just look at, um, making that all within the app, uh, with our, our geosoning technology.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, Kate, for, uh, bringing this information to us this evening and, and thank you to Bird for thinking about our community, for, uh, their investment and, uh, we wish you nothing but success and, uh, a good relationship with our community.
Perfect, thank you so much. And then open doors, uh, to be asking questions, they'll have an account manager that we'll set up with, um, so, you know, ears are open and, and we hope to, for the long-term success as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And there wasn't anything else from the, well, we have two economic development committees.
Both, both.
With the code Bird, okay. Um, next item then is the finance committee meeting on March 15th, 2021.
Great. All right, um, review claims as usual, routine meeting, um, for the most part on February 28th, 21, cash balances in the cash account, 986,128.37 and investments totaled 100 and, or 1.6 million. Alan, we had a, a larger chunk in the cash balance, but on January, uh, we transferred 250 dollars into the savings account and then as of February 28th, the current savings account balance is 390 dollars and, nice, 390,000,497. That was horrible. Um, anyway, the, uh, sales tax.
The number's good.
The number's good, yeah, just the way the setup was bad. Um, the sales tax is down by about 8% for the year, um, which is, you know, never a good thing, but, um, due to our awesome department heads and Angelica's leadership, we have only expended 57.1% of our budgeted, uh, expenses and we have collected 65.6% of our budget revenue, which is a little bit lower than, we should be at 66.6 because we're 2/30 of the year through. So, um, the finance committee is looking into paying off some of our long-term debts to save some interest since we do have some cash in, in the, um, in the pooled cash. Um, committee is also looking into taking a portion of that monthly payment to start putting it into the capital improvement, um, funds and that's about it. I'll answer any questions.
Does council have any questions?
Um, can you repeat the, the balances because I, I got lost, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the pooled cash account is at 986,128.37 as of February 28th. Total investments, 1,602,916.16. In January, uh, we transferred 250 dollars into the savings account and as of February 28th, the balance in the savings account is 390,497 dollars.
And, yeah, that, the savings account, is that the, Mr. General Savings or pay the?
To pay the airport.
And I think it's also additional savings.
Yes, and we also discussed, um, opening a checking account for the airport fund, um, so that will, um, likely be on the next city council agenda. Go ahead and get that checking account set up so we have it ready to go and we can transfer the funds in there, um, for our annual payment.
Okay. Uh, and what was the amount of the annual payment that was agreed on?
It's, uh, just above 119,000 dollars, I don't have the exact dollar amount.
Okay, that, that's fine, a rough estimate's fine. So we're nearly four times that amount?
Yes. So we will have, I mean, our plan is to do the 250,000 plus the 119,000, like plus the annual payment.
If things continue to go well, that should be fully retained within three years.
That's the big, yeah. We're gonna, we're working on it.
We've, we've got good leadership working on our.
Sorry, I was gonna talk to you.
Um, any other questions for, regarding the finance committee meeting? All right, thank you. Um, for the mayor's report, um, there's quite a bit going on. Um, in the tourism committee report, Connor mentioned the lieutenant governor turkey hunt, um, having received some funding. That will be April 14th through the 16th. Um, this is, uh, you know, really one of the biggest economic development events that we, um, have in our community, uh, each year. Uh, didn't get to have it last year. Um, this year, the numbers are gonna be quite a bit, um, lower. A lot of corporations still don't have any allowed travel for their, um, their folks and so we, we won't have as many people, uh, able to attend. Um, and I, I think if you look at the turkey population around, it's a little bit down as well, so maybe that's all right.
There's a lot of turkey.
Not available.
Not at all.
But, uh, that is coming up the April 14th, 15th and 16th. Um, OML, um, I don't know if, if everybody, I'm gonna start forwarding these to Angelica, but they send out, um, an advocacy bulletin regarding, um, legislation and I think they call it the OML Advocate is what it's called, but it's regarding state legislation that's out there. There's a couple, um, bills I'll, I'll just bring to everybody's attention. One, the Senate Bill 541, um, which, uh, whether or not you agree or disagree with the principle of eye masks or whatever, um, this legislation is, um, for the state legislature to, um, say that municipalities don't have the authority to issue mask mandates. Whether it's a mask mandate or anything else, um, the municipal league opposes the state's ability to preempt municipal judgment. So, um, OML is opposing that legislation. I haven't heard an update as to, to how that's proceeded in the senate at this time, um, but ultimately it doesn't have anything to do whether it's a mask mandate or not. It has to do with, uh, the state shouldn't be able to tell our, uh, people in our community, um, that they can or can't impose such legislation or such mandates. Um, Senate Bill 838, um, is another one that's, um, OML's been working on this for quite some time and it's regarding public safety districts. Um, it passed through the senate and is going on to the house, but essentially, um, this legislation allows, um, entities of, of government, um, to create, um, public safety districts to which they can then, um, go to their citizens and see if they, uh, want to fund their safety district with, uh, ad liborem taxes. So, um, right now, um, it's, uh, like I said, it's passed the, the senate, it's going on to the house and if it does pass in the house, it doesn't say that City of Alba has to set up a public safety district, but it says if we need to, we can, um, with voter approval.
Would that be similar to the 522 district?
It'd be similar to the 522 district for EMS. Um, there'd be a cap on how many mills and, and that kind of thing, but it would allow the voters to choose whether or not that's an avenue they wanted to pursue.
Tell me, unlike the 522, don't get me wrong, but that goes to fire, that goes to all public safety.
All public safety, fire police and, and EMS. Um, and I think, well, there's not an example of where it's been used in Oklahoma, but in other places it's, it's been used for all those, so. Um, the, uh, other, uh, bill that's come out of the senate and I, I posit it this past, um, but it, uh, would allow cities that have, um, the capability, um, in the website and, and adequate broadband to livestream their, um, public meetings. So, um, that, uh, I could see that potentially, uh, being something that we see in our future. Um, I, I know that there's also, uh, legislation passed to, to permit, uh, virtual meetings, um, at least in one of the chambers of, of the state legislature, maybe both at this time. Um, and so, um, that's all, you know, because of the pandemic becoming more, um, acceptable. Regarding the pandemic, Woods County's looking pretty good. When I checked the numbers yesterday, I think we had 19 active cases of coronavirus. Um, and so, um, that being said, um, we're kind of in a, in a, in a timeframe where, um, the people that might've gotten COVID over Christmas or Thanksgiving, um, they're just now getting out of what the, the data is saying might be their, um, immunity period. So they, you know, hit past that 90 days and, and they might, we might start seeing an uptick in cases again as people, um, lose some immunity, maybe. Um, but we're also seeing statewide, uh, a very high number of vaccinations, um, I think actually now. I think actually nationally, we're in the top 10 for vaccinations administered here in Oklahoma. So I really am hopeful that with all of this, this pandemic may start to go away. On that note, at the federal level, with this administration's, they call it the American Rescue Plan, our citizens are getting money, but also there's, I think, $65 billion set aside for Oklahoma cities. And depending on how you look at the formula, and I've sought clarification on how you figure this, but we could be in the range of 520 to 800,000 dollars for the City of Alva. Like with the 300 and some thousand we got earlier in this budget year, this funding would be able to use for our public safety wages. But also, there'd be some other, potentially other areas that would be pandemic-related that we could use it on. And obviously, expenses directly related to masks and infection control and that kind of thing. But there may be some other facets of that that we would qualify to use that funding for as well. And I think that extends the timeframe for two or three years.
2024?
I think 2024 would be the timeframe for using those funds. So, you know, $800,000, if we were to get that much, we'd spend it on public safety salaries, you know, pretty easily, particularly over that timeframe. So that... We look forward to seeing how that rolls out. It's not going to run through the same process as it did last time. Last time, it went through the state and the state doled it out to the cities. And this time, it's going to come directly. The state won't have anything other than a pass-through at that point. The amount will be determined at a higher level than at the state level. We... Locally, we've got some committee appointments that'll be upcoming. So if you know folks that are looking to serve in another capacity or if any of you that are not up for election want to continue your involvement, we will have some opportunities on some committees. And with that, I want to, you know, Beau's not here and Trent's not here, but Chris and Brian, I want to for sure thank you guys for your service to this council. Danny, you know, we hope to see you back here for more meetings, but we do know that you're up for election as well. And, I mean, it's, to me, I think we've had a great working relationship. We don't always agree on everything, and we definitely always kind of bring a different perspective to the table. And that's important for what we're doing. And I appreciate all of you. I know that it hasn't always been enjoyable, but it has been important and it... Your commitment is admirable. That said, I am looking forward to seeing how the elections turn out. We had a huge number of candidates apply for the open seats. And so we will have some changes at our next council meeting. But for today, I'm very happy and honored to serve with all of you. And I'm sure we will work together more in the future. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question on the legislative deal, which you didn't mention. I believe there was one under one about the Tiff districts where the schools district could possibly veto. Do you remember that one? I don't know what happened to that one.
It was introduced...
I believe it failed.
I think...
I think it did too.
I don't know that it got out of committee.
I hadn't heard more, I just seen one of those emails that came out.
I also believe Senate Bill 541 about the masks, there was some amended language to that. There were still some restrictions that were going to be placed on communities, but they were loosened in how that was going to be affected. So if it's the same bill, I'm picking.
It came out today stating that it's... The six feet part definitely is not any better than three feet. So we're going to probably adjust that also. Lots of ongoing changes.
It's been a moving target this whole time. Happy to answer any other questions? Angelica, city business manager report.
All right. I have a few things as well. I know I've had lots of, lots of questions about the stoplight at Forest in Oklahoma. So I've talked to each of you a little bit. It's gonna... Our estimate that we've received is approximately $10,000 to have that stoplight repaired. We've had issues with it for about almost two years. I'm working to get the people that we work with traffic signals to come out and talk with Brian, with Chief Miller, excuse me, a little bit about it because he didn't agree with that number at all. And so we're still working on that, but we will be working to get it fixed. The issue is that the moisture in the ground is what causes that to short-circuit essentially and causes it to flash red. So right now, between the really cold weather and the freeze that we had with all the water in the ground, and then we've had rain and rain and a little bit more rain, it's really messing with that system. And so it'll probably be flashing for just a little bit longer. We're doing our best to do that. But right now, if we go reset it, there's enough moisture in the ground, it just trips right back out to the flashing, so. Talking about the weather that we've had between the freezing cold and the rain, we have asphalt buckling on Second Street. We have concrete buckling on Fourth Street. And we have asphalt buckling on Olive. And I know there's many other places where the top holes are starting to get bad. We're working to get Second Street reopened. They've gone back and we had a little bit of water leaking in there from our water line that runs through there. They've got that fixed, and so they're starting to put things back in there. Hopefully, we'll get gravel and rock put back in there and be able to open that up soon. Still trying to work out a plan for that long term, but should be able... Working on getting it open soon. And the water department has been working in the well field. We've got four electrical boxes coming. They put a new submersible pump in one of the wells today in preparation for that electrical work to begin, trying to get everything ready to go for the summer seasons where we'll be pumping a lot more water, obviously. I have been working with the state auditor and inspector's office through the citizens petition audit that was passed or that went through in, I believe, September of 2019. I feel like things are going great. We've been able to provide all the documentation that he's requested, been able to answer all the questions that he's had. He... I met with him today and I sent him some more documentation. And I think we're getting close to being through the end of that. I know he can't tell me essentially what's going on, that he'll either write a letter back to city council or make a presentation for city council. But from my perspective, I've been able to answer all those questions and getting the appropriate documentation. And I, from my perspective, I feel like everything is going well, so.
I'll add, from my perspective, he's not indicated anything to me that would lead me to believe otherwise either.
I know he's talked with some other community members as well. So I feel like things are going well there. Hopefully, we'll be through that pretty soon. Sudden Link has approached the City of Alva. They'd like to renew their franchise agreement. It's a 10-year agreement. It's 2% of gross receipts. I forwarded that out to the finance committee to review. And then if appropriate, we'll bring it back to city council for...
Who's that?
Sudden Link. I mean, then the final thing is we got to do something a little bit fun. Seems like we've had a year of non-fun activities. But on March 11th, we got to do an employee appreciation day. The police department, they cooked hamburgers and hot dogs for us. And we got together and feed everybody. We didn't get to have a Christmas party this year, so I was able to give out service awards to the employees that would have gotten service awards in December. We played a little bit of cornhole, just relaxed for a couple of hours. It was nice to do that for the employees to get together and just hang out for a little bit. So that was a lot of fun, and I really enjoyed the ability to be able to do that for everyone. I think it was very well received. And then I just also wanted to extend my thanks out to the council members. I know this has been a fun year for everyone. I know... I appreciate all the help that you guys have given to me and the expertise and the patience that you showed to me. And I really appreciate everything that you guys have done this year, so. I would be happy to get any more questions.
And we do need a core of you to show up.
Yes.
In April, don't we? Yeah.
I was gonna say, I thought the April meeting, but yeah, they had...
You don't have to stick around, but... I don't think you'll swear anybody in unless we can open the meeting.
That's right. All right. Any other questions for Angelica? All right, thank you, Angelica. Next item was remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody would like to make a public comment, we'll ask you to approach the podium and we will give you two minutes. If you do, we ask that you please identify yourself when you make your comments. All right. There being none, we'll move on to item nine is discussion... Excuse me, item eight. Discussion on a City of Alva hardship program to assist with the payment of utility bills. This is not probably the first time it's come up outside of council, but we haven't really ever had a discussion on this. There's... There was, after the winter weather event here a couple of weeks ago, we had, I guess, kicked around some thoughts on, you know, maybe there's some hardship out there that we can help to alleviate, whether it be, you know, an increased, you know, water bill for having dripped your faucets for basically two weeks on end and/or whether it's because you did ultimately have a water line break related to the weather event. We knew that with the number of breaks and requests for meter turnoffs, we responded as quickly as we could. But with our crew, they... The number of calls overwhelmed them rather quickly. We, Angelica and I have talked. We've talked with legal counsel and, you know, there's not a lot of options that we have that we can legally pursue. Most cities that we've communicated with regarding this winter weather event, they're extending their terms for payment. So if they got hit with an extra-large bill, they'll have, you know, an extended period of time to pay those off. But we looked at... Angelica looked at our consumption was about 22% or our water coming from the well field was about 22% higher than our six-year average for the same timeframe. And we looked to see, you know, how many customers experienced that same increase. And there were over 1,000 water customers that experienced that for this billing period. And I guess this is maybe so we can kind of have a discussion on maybe a broader scale because singling out customers for a credit is not something we're permitted to do. And thus, the conversation then is, is there interest in developing a hardship program that would, you know, basically be a year-round program where citizens contribute to a fund to which then, as they experience a hardship with regard to their utilities, which is going to be water or sewer, that there'd be a fund, a restricted fund set aside that was contributed to voluntarily with the water department or the water committee, the water wastewater committee, identifying some parameters of what constitutes a hardship and how do you apply for those funds. And so it really... Talking about it in council meeting because we felt like enough council members had an interest in the topic that we started here and then sent it back to water wastewater.
I'll say, we talked about this kind of a program or something similar four or five years ago and didn't really push forward with it. It was something I felt like there was interest in then. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great program. I think there's definitely people in our community who could utilize it and use that assistance at times, you know, whether it be another weather event like this or some other hardship in their life. So I definitely think it's something that should be explored.
I think we can establish parameters for the program. I think it possibly, I don't know, like it somehow attached to the utility bill, kind of like the water perimeter type situation, I believe, like the gas company or something does, if somebody wishes to contribute a little bit extra. They can set it up to allow them to do that. But I think we need to kind of get some type of guideline set up to where they know what, you know, if they're contributing, how it's going to be handled and looked at and stuff. But I like, yeah, I give me a good thing like that.
I think we need citizen involvement on those parameters. On those... I don't think it... I think we need to get more input than just us or the waterworks. I think we need that. I think we do.
It can get sticky from what we're allowed to do.
It could get real sticky.
Because even, you know, we had a lot of ideas kicked around, you know, why don't we try this or that or the other? And what I would say would be similar to what our citizens would be asking for, and we just can't do some of those things, so.
But they need to know those things. They... We need to...
I kind of feel like it shouldn't be... I know this is for later, probably later discussion, but I don't feel like it should be wastewater that determines the hardship application. I think that should be like the board of adjustments. It should be a group of citizens that has a set of parameters that says, does this person meet that qualification? Because then it removes it from us. If it becomes part of the citizen issue.
Well...
I think it needs to be both.
There again.
Interaction.
Some of the discussion's got to start somewhere.
Whatever we... Wherever we land, and we're probably going to have to land a few times because wherever we land, we're going to have to run it back through and make sure that we're not breaking the law.
Right.
And then take it forward.
Right.
Because like, what's this? It'll be a growing, evolving type of deal because, I mean, like I say, I mean, what committee starts in and then everybody looks at it and looks at different angles. And then even, you know, at some point in time, put it out there and then, you know, maybe some citizen input too. We may not have thought of, but I mean, it's gonna take some time to establish and get the design of it.
So without any objections, I'm going to send that to the water and wastewater committee to start. And then we'll go from there. All right? Next item on the agenda is discussion in action to approve change order number one, reducing the total cost of the Odles project for an amount not to exceed $191,927.50. This is a reduction in the overall contract by about $3,000. It's a formality. The project is complete. And... But in order for the funding to be disseminated, this change order has to be approved stating the final cost of the project. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve change order number one, reducing the total cost of the Odles project for an amount not to exceed $191,927.50.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve change order number one, reducing the total cost of the Odles project for an amount not to exceed $191,927.50. Is there any further discussion? Please call vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Item 10 is discussion in action on the appointment of city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for... on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2021-2022 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Previously, this has been on our behalf, Councilmember Stelling and Councilmember Hamilton. And it's up for discussion again. I don't think anybody, nobody has voiced any displeasure with your involvement to me. I don't know if you're willing to continue or...
Can I, with the potential for there being four new representatives on council next month, could this be an item that's delayed a month, or does it need to be settled?
I think when you get going on it, because a lot of times it drags on, and we're pushing the deadline the way it is. And it's been actually the last year, so I mean, last year stuff between Angelica and Brian, but it's kind of been some bouncing around stuff. And so it's kind of more of a backup. I mean, we've been adding, kind of know the ins and outs of it a little bit, so like, for anything this year, like, I'll just say it's...
You guys are still around, so that's not an issue.
We're still around.
Still around. That sounded really bad. I apologize.
When I hit the bar, Glenn, I'm still around.
If we live long enough, we'll all still be around.
I didn't hear, I obviously heard Randy say that he's willing, but I didn't actually hear Mary say that she was willing.
I enjoy working with Randy on this because he really takes it thoroughly. He really knows what he's doing. And so I just sit there and try to verbally critique it. So I don't mind doing it again with Randy.
I'll be happy to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Stelling, Councilmember Hamilton to as the city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2021-2022 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to appoint Randy Stelling and Mary Hamilton as city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2021-2022 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
All right. Next item is discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1 to discuss the evaluation of the city business manager.
Motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
All right. I'll ask council members, secretary and, or clerk, sorry, and legal counsel to stay. Angelica, we'll call you back in in a little bit. Everybody else will let you know when we're going back into regular session. Item 13 is action on the evaluation of the city business manager. We did discuss the performance of the business manager, and by and large, satisfactory, the performance is satisfactory. We really appreciate the energy that Angelica has brought to our municipal operations and her, you know, commitment to do things the right way, her commitment to the people that work for our city, and her, you know, ownership of a year's worth of, you know, quite a few different hardships, from pandemic to, you know, tragic, other tragic losses, to weather events, to financial problems. And I'll just say it again, when you signed up for this position, we had $20,000 in the bank, and today we have well over a million. And so you have really had vision for the direction that things needed to go, and you have implemented that with the people that work for our city and make some really great things happen in a really tough year. And so I'll entertain a motion or other comment from the council.
I'll make a motion to extend to Angelica Brady a two-year contract with a total compensation package of $90,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
There was some discussion about year two of that contract, and I don't know if you want to address that in your motion.
Do I amend it, or do we need to vote?
I think you would amend your motion.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to add that in year two, she would receive no less than the COLA apportionment provided to the rest of the city employees.
I'll second that.
You still second that?
Second, I amend that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. From Mr. Sherman, there are Mr. Winters that moved for a two-year contract with Angelica Brady, total compensation package of $90,000, with no less than the City of Alva COLA increase after year one. That motion was seconded by Mary Hamilton. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Next item is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I would just like to say to the citizens of Alva, I appreciate all the support, the comments, the citizens coming up to me for the last four years has been inspiring, and it's been an honor to serve on the council.
I'll add, I've really enjoyed the six years I've been on here. And I hope you guys all have a good, smooth process going forward. And it's been a real enlightening learning experience and been very valuable, I feel like, for me. So, thank you.
I want to say thank you to both of you and Dr. Hannaford, who isn't here, for everything you guys have done for several years.
I like the different ideas, the different suggestions, where we're all just on the same page all the time. It's good to have different opinions, and we appreciate your
Don't be afraid to sit out there and fill that little two-minute beginning that we never get anybody to comment on. Just tell us how good of a job we're doing, anytime. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
I know that we'll probably be seeing Chris's name on the agenda moving forward, as he is still interested in serving on the library board. And I know private conversations that, although there might not be anything, you know, set in stone, but I know that those of you that have served want to continue to do for your community. So, all right.
There are no further remarks. The council meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait, new business. I don't think we have any new business. Now is now before the adjournment. Okay. Shelly, when you're ready, will you please call the roll for the Alva Utility Authority?
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hannaford?
Okay. We have a quorum. Item three is discussion in action on a consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19, 2021. Approval of February claims in the amount of $83,410.24. And payroll expenses of $54,821.54. Item C, approval of March claims in the amount of $111,835.47. Payroll expenses of $61,357.85. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
All right. Item five is discussion in action to award the installation of 16-inch water transmission main replacement to Marshaw Enterprises of Enid, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $152,241.20. We talked at previous meetings about the supply line coming into town. And we actually anticipated this bid coming in significantly higher, maybe twice as much. But Angelica had informed the Finance Committee earlier that Marshaw had done some work with Myers Engineering previously, and even, you know, running into some issues in previous jobs. They've been good to not have the, to do what they can to alleviate any burden they can off of the, whatever municipality or public entity they were working for, with, I guess, conscientious decision-making and whatnot. So they do come in as the lowest and best bid on this. And anything else to add from the committee or Angelica?
So we'll use bond revenue to pay for this. So being going to be so much less than what we anticipated, that allows us room for additional projects. But this is the final project that we had on our original bond up. And so that will allow us to then go on and do other things with the remaining money.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the installation of 16-inch water transmission main replacements to Marshaw Enterprises of Enid, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $152,241.20.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to award the installation of a 16-inch water transmission line replacement to Marshaw Enterprises of Enid, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $152,241.20. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. There being no further business for the Utility Authority, we will adjourn that meeting and open the regular meeting of the Alva Economic Development Authority.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved at AEDA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19, 2021. Item B, approval of February claims in the amount of $16,806.40. Payroll expenses of $14,768.82. And approval of March claims in the amount of $14,000, excuse me, $13,699.53. And payroll expenses of $13,910.30. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Pretty paid, but sure. There being no further business, we will adjourn.